Tuesday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty twenty, Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. In order, I'm going to call this meeting to order and the first business is our invocation that's going to be offered to us this morning by Sean Thomas from South Side Baptist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Harvey, Mr. Thomas.
Good morning, Commissioners. Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, God, I do thank you for this day that you've given us. God, I thank you that, God, you've provided a place for us, God, a home, Lord. God, I thank you for this county, God. God, how you've watched over and protected us, God. Lord, I give you praise today. I give you thanks. God, I ask now for your continued, God, hand of protection upon us, Lord. God, in the midst of darkness that we see around us, God, your light is still shining bright and I thank you and give you praise for it. God, I pray now for our students, administrators, teachers, and parents, God, as school is about to open up in this county, God. God, that you be with them in a mighty way. God, those that make decisions, God, in leadership roles, I pray for them, God. God, I pray you pour your wisdom out upon us, God. God, not to wisdom of man, but to wisdom of God. God, I pray you give us the courage and the strength to follow your will and what your place upon us. Lord, I love you. I give you praise and I ask, God, today, God, in this very meeting, God, that you just rule and reign. God, that everything that is said and done be pleasing unto you, God. And God, that we'd follow your will and your will alone. I ask now that you bless, continue to watch over us, God, and bless this time together. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, Sean, and thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for that this morning. The chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as listed on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes listed on the agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Pickens to approve the minutes listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we're going to recess the Board of County Commissioners' meeting and convene the Port Authority meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes listed on the agenda for the Port Authority.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rawls.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Pickens to approve the Port Authority minutes listed on the agenda. Excuse me. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Is there any public comment on Port Authority items? Hearing none, we'll move to the next. Is there anything under general discussion in Port Authority this morning?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Pickens.
Yeah, I just was wondering if there's any update on anything on the leases out of the barge port. St. John's.
Okay, Ms. Young, are you in with us? I think she got kicked out of them.
She.
I don't see her on the screen. I think she's having IT issues this morning.
Okay. I'll take that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like for me to.
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pickens, we've had some email trends going back and forth between the folks out there at St. John's Ship Builders and our procurement department. We have yet to finalize anything. As soon as we do, we will certainly bring that back to the Commission for review and approval. And that's the most latest update that we have at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pickens, I understand that yesterday, Terry, would you mute, please? I understand that y'all had a meeting yesterday on Project Play, which is owned by the port. Do you want to talk about that now or later under Commissioner Comments, or when would you like to bring up that?
We can go ahead and do that now, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we did have a meeting yesterday. Some zoomed in and some, you know, attended in person. And so we had actually eight, excuse me, six, six board members there. So we did have a quorum. And there was a lot of discussion about whether or not to go ahead and open the park up, playground equipment and splash pad, or just the playground equipment. And so we came down to where there was a motion to open up the playground equipment and wait on the splash pad. And it tied a three, three vote, three, four, and three again. So we kind of did not have a consensus on how to move forward with that.
This is our responsibility.
And so we were at a stalemate yesterday.
Okay.
So we don't have a recommendation. Three wanted to wait until after Labor Day and open it up Tuesday after Labor Day to see how the opening of the school affected the COVID numbers. And then three were ready to open up the playground equipment and hold on the splash pad until after Labor Day.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Commissioner Pickens, I thank you for having your meeting and doing that. You know, I kind of like what you just said about waiting till the schools open up. But I would like to hear from Kevin, our Parks and Recreation Director. What would your thought be, Mr. Stevens, if you don't mind me asking, Mr. Chairman?
Not at all, Mr. Stevens. You're muted, Kevin.
Good morning, sir. I was at the meeting with Commissioner Pickens yesterday and heard the discussion. My only fear and one of the things that was brought up several times was that all the other playgrounds throughout the county are open currently. And I think it would be very disappointing to the community to have the grand opening ceremony tomorrow, the ribbon cutting, if you will, and then not actually open the playground. That's really my biggest reservation about it. We don't seem to be having an issue at other playgrounds. We know that this will be the main draw. It's brand new, one of the larger events that we have here. So I would be okay. I can support opening the playground and letting parents take that responsibility. If they're not comfortable with their children being around other children, then they don't have to stay there. If they, if they're okay with it and they choose to come and enjoy it, then they have that right as a parent to come and stay. So I kind of lean towards leaving it up to the parents' choice of what they would prefer to do.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey, are you done with the floor, sir?
I am, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other comments by Commissioners?
I have one.
Commissioner Rawls.
I, you know, I think it's counterintuitive that we selectively open or close playgrounds. If we're open, we're open. If we're closed, we're closed. Personally, let's see, the splash pad opened up as well. You know, COVID resides on plastics and metals, doesn't reside well in water at all. You know, it makes no sense. It wouldn't open the splash pad. Part of the argument yesterday from, because I was at the meeting, was that, well, you're going to attract more people. But you can attract more people no matter what. And you've got Labor Day weekend coming up and the pavilions are going to be used at the playground. And Kevin pointed out that they're being used anyways. The playground's being used anyways. So I really think that we just need to go to open this thing up. The public's going to do what the public's going to do. You know, we've been in this quote unquote state of emergency and this disaster that, that, you know, we've been in this thing since March. I think that we need to just go ahead and start getting the county opened up. Let's start having our meetings in person again, by the way. You know, one lady pointed out yesterday at the Parks Rec meeting that half the people in the room weren't wearing face masks. So I don't know why we can't be together in the same room and quit having these glitches with electronic media. But I'll get off my soapbox for a minute. I personally think we should open everything up, including the splash pad tomorrow.
Is there any other comments by Commissioners at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Pickens.
And they were good input from both sides. But one of the concerns was is this, this is in a very, you know, prominent place in Putnam County where people come from all, from north, southeast, west to get to this particular one. It's a little different. It's larger than, I believe, any other playground and it's new. So I think the, and there's no way for Parks and Recreation to monitor the amount of people that are there and then social distancing is there, any of that. So it's going to be self-disciplined as far as what the people do when they get there. So that was one of the, that was one of the concerns, was the amount of people that possibly could be at this park at one time when it opens up. So that's all I have.
Can I talk a few paragraphs?
Just a second, I'm not muted. Give me just a second, Jim, if you would. Okay, so what is the will of the Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls.
I'd like to make a motion that immediately after cutting the ribbon tomorrow, we open the playground up for public use.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for discussion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rawls and a second by Commissioner Harvey that the, after the ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow morning, Project Play would open for business immediately. Is there any further discussion?
There is, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey.
Is, you know, I tend to agree. I think this is going to be a unique feature. All parks are not the same. This one will have a water feature that we've never had before. Is there any way, Kevin, that we could put signs up that we would limit so many people at a time? Or what can we do? Because, you know, the last thing we want to do as Commissioners is to create mass gatherings at a time when school's trying to start. And that was my big concern over the weekend, last weekend. So, Mr. Stevens, is there any way that we could, you know, self-discipline, I understand, but is there any way we can say, please be respectful, have signs up, limit the amount of people there? What can we do to help, you know, ease this thing along?
Yes, sir. We could certainly put up a couple of signs like we have in current parks right now. We have signs that talk about social distancing, signs that say, you know, how to keep away from each other and stuff like that. So we could certainly put up a couple of signs right directly outside of the splash pad itself and just simply encourage people, you know, to self-monitor. Let them make their own decisions on, again, if they're comfortable to proceed and if they're uncomfortable to take actions, go somewhere else. We also have to remember that the playground portion is about 2,500 square feet or so. So there's a lot of room in there where, you know, you could distance yourself out of things. You don't have to be right on top of each other. There are other opportunities to place in other places in the playground. The splash pad, as Commissioner Rawls brought up, the water has been treated. So the water will have a killing effect on the, any viruses or anything that's in there. So that should help. But there's, there's no way we, as a staff, could control that. But we could certainly put some signs up and encourage people.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Goddard.
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner Pickens, now, I'm all for opening this. I've been wanting to see it opened and complete. I want to see everything open there. But now, what about going over the wishes of the committee? I mean, we put committees in place to get that input so that we can try to, you know, make decisions that's based on, you know, a larger group than just five men. So what's your view on this? You know, I think we need to open it. I do. I really think it's a plus for us. The kids have been cooped up. They're ready to get out and play. And as we know, the water makes a big difference. So what is your view?
Well, you know, I have a view, you know, as that board member and then as a Commissioner also. I erred on the side of caution. It was one of those that felt that it should wait till after Labor Day. Now, we were not able to find a consensus. So I explained to my board members that I thanked them for their input. If we'd had seven, then we probably would have, we would have come with a decision, whether it was to delay it or to go ahead and open it up, you know, partway or with the splash pad also. So, but we, we did not come to that conclusion. So I explained to them, I said, the Commissioners tomorrow very well may vote to open this or they may postpone it. So they understand that.
Okay, well, I.
We don't have a recommendation, unfortunately. I did tell them that I had stress to the board and I appreciate Chairman Turner allowing me to call a meeting. I thank Kevin for doing it and for everybody to either zoom in or show up in person on such short notice so we could get the opinion or a recommendation from the board. But this particular time, it was a two-two, two-two tie. So I believe it should be up to the Commission to decide how we move forward with this, with this park and splash pad.
Okay. Well, it's like you said, it was a three-three decision. Kevin's on board with it. And I really think, you know, if we're going to have a grand opening, then we need to do a complete grand opening. So I deal the floor.
And also Chairman Turner, to address Commissioner Harvey and all the Commissioners, is I made the statement as that, you know, no other Commissioner wants a more of a feel-good moment for Putnam County. We need a feel-good moment. And this is one. This is a positive thing, I believe, that the Commission and the Port Authority have done along with the kindness and the donation from the Rotary Club of Palatka to do something for Putnam County that we'd never really had before. So it's kind of torn between air and caution and go ahead and get it open. So I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Mr. Stevens, in our, in our other parks that we have open, do we still have hand washing stations added?
Yes, sir.
Could we get a hand washing station placed not at the splash pad but at the playground portion of that facility like we have at other areas?
Yes, sir. We should be able to. I just had to check with the contractor, the provider, to make sure they have them available. But we can certainly check on that.
Okay, well, at the very least, we ought to be able to take one that's not being used as much in place over there if possible. Ms. Young, do you think that would be any difficulty?
No, sir. We can make that happen.
Okay. With the added signage that has been requested this morning and the added hand washing station, not for the splash pad but for the playground portion of Project Play, I completely agree with Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Pickens and the rest of the Commissioners that I think it would be better to open it up. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to open it up after the ribbon cutting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have Commissioner Pickens opposed, opening it up. So the motion was four to one.
I have a question.
Commissioner Rawls.
Are swimsuits allowed tomorrow during the ribbon cutting?
Not by you.
Not for you.
I'm being dead serious. I think we should all make a laugh through that thing before we open it up.
Well, we may get them to open it up for you this afternoon where you could take your laugh if you'd like. A good deal. All right. Having no more Port Authority business at this time, I'm going to adjourn the Port Authority meeting and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners' meeting. And the next item on the list is public comment. This portion of the meeting is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Now, under the new rules that Mr. Commando came up with, we, we take emails previous and those emails are distributed to the Board and become part of the record, but we do not have to read them out loud in the public comment. If someone wants to participate in public comment, they have to call in during the public comment session at the number given. And I would let them in the room one by one. The only two items, the only two people we have in the waiting room at this time are for a codes case, which is item six on the agenda, I believe. And so with that being said, Ms. Parsons, do you have anything else to add to that?
I do not. I forwarded all of the comments to all five Commissioners and I also printed them out for Sarah for the record.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Commando, do you feel like that meets the intent of the new rules you set up?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good deal, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I just really want to congratulate, I loo- I looked over this agenda, I looked at those emails, and I, I want to say to staff and to you, job well done. This agenda, the, the way people can communicate, I mean, it's all spelled out, better than I think we've ever been able to do. And, I mean, I look forward to getting back in chambers myself, but I tell you, I'm very pleased, and I really want to congratulate you and staff and our attorney for, for having a format that is very easily attainable, and our record keeping will be up to par on that, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. And with that being said, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And I'm gonna ask the commissioners, do they have any, uh, items they'd like to pull from the consent agenda, uh, starting with Commissioner Goddard?
No, sir, I have none.
Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I want to pull item H for a moment.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
Aye.
And I have none additional.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board approves the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and J.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard, uh, to approve those items on the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item H, uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to give you a point of clarification on this, this is a agreement between Weyerhauser and George's Lake. It's, you'll see on there a hunting club, it's really not hunting camp property, it's just lake. Um, and you'll see a signature of mine. Uh, the reason I signed it when I first got to the board, um, the letter came to me, um, actually to Mr., um, Ed Taylor, and then it came to me, and I saw that Ed had signed it before, I signed it, and then, uh, our attorney at the time kind of said, Larry, the chairman signs these, not you. So, uh, just a point of clarification, so you will know why my signature was on there, it was a, it was complete excitement on my part, and the oversight, I didn't know the rules, and, uh, but now we've got it all straightened out. So, Mr. Chairman, I ask that you approve item H.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item H.
I'll second.
And, uh, uh, by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard. Uh, I have, do have one question, uh, do we need to redo this lease that we're to be signed by the chair, uh, Mr. Commando?
No, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we can redo it just by handwriting the change on it.
Okay, uh, well, would you, uh, review that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, with that being said, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, item I, Commissioner Pickens? Did, hang on a second, Commissioner Pickens, did someone else? Well, public comment has ended, do I need to continue letting public comment in?
You do not, it's at the discretion of you as the chair.
Okay, would you please reach out to him, Jacob, and ask him what it is there, uh, is, is they wanting to participate in another adjourned item such as a code case? Or were they wanting public comment because public comment section is now over? Uh, Commissioner Pickens, uh, item I?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, um, just wanted to pull that, because I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Public Works and Mr. Troxell, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mike, I know that these, um, inmate crews are very valuable to the county and actually perform some services that we really can't hire, and as I just knew, understanding with the COVID pandemic, they've not been able to come out as often, have you had any contact with them to, to see, um, what, what, what's gonna happen in the future, uh, with these, or are they out and, and are, are we using them?
Yes, sir, uh, I have not talked with them personally, other, other than, uh, some of the, the guards that are out here. Uh, what we, what we've done is, uh, they're, they're only providing about two inmates per, per, uh, supervisor, and when we used to get five, uh, inmates per supervisor, so we're still getting the three supervisors and the three crews, but the crews are, are, are down to two people per crew.
Okay, has there been any discussion after this pandemic does actually settle down to, to bring those back up, you know, closer to the number of five, or? Do you know, I still think it's a good deal, even with a couple of people, because, um, you, you put salaries and benefits together, trying to hire somebody to do some of this work, and it would be more than what these crews are, so, but I just didn't know there was any discussion if they were gonna bump those up, uh, later on?
Yes, they, they do plan on bumping them up to the, where, uh, they can get five per crew, uh, but it's not happening right now, I've still got two per crew right now, which is still a great asset for us.
Okay, okay, thank you, all right, with that, I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept, uh, agenda number item, uh, I for the inmate, inmate labor crews.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Pickens and a second by Commissioner Harvey to, uh, to approve item I on the menu, on menu, on the agenda. Must be lunchtime already.
Morgasbord.
Yeah, is his, is, is there any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Um, we're gonna move on next to item six on the code case. I'm gonna let Mr. Petri and Mr. Sharber in. Give them just a minute to, uh, All right, you are, you are. Is everybody, is, is everybody in this room muted? Okay, all right, um. All right, with that being said, Jacob, would you, uh, would you repeat your comment, please? Okay, good deal, uh. We're going to, uh, move on to item six on the agenda, which is a fine reduction case request, uh, in, uh, at 120 Country Living Lane in Melrose. Uh, and I'm gonna turn that over to, uh, Mr. Moore, I assume, is that correct, Mr. Sioffi?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Moore, if you'd take it from there, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Address is 120 Country Living Lane. The violation was condemned unsafe mobile home and trash in the street. The original fine amount was fifty thousand ninety-seven fifty cents. The total cost of enforcement action was four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars. Uh, the property owner purchased this property at a tax deed sale a year and a half ago. He said that he was unaware of the violations, the property is compliant, and the property owner is requesting a fine reduction. If granted, we recommend the fee to be paid with the county.
Okay, we have a, uh, recommendation from, uh, from them, or a presentation by the codes officer. Uh, is there any, uh, discussion, or what is the pleasure of the commissioners at this time, Commissioner Harvey?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, um, I have a question on this one, and, and it, it seems to come up, and I just talked to Mr. Commando prior to the meeting, where the applicant states that he hired an attorney to clear the title, and I, I guess what I'm trying to ask here is, why didn't they see that this lien was on the title? Or maybe they saw the lien and just thought it would go away? Um, but this is a, this is a, a place in my district that's been needing to be cleaned up for a long, long time, and I'm very pleased that it is cleaned up, but I guess I just don't understand why, why they didn't catch the lien, or that they think the lien would just go away when they cleared the title. Um, I, I guess I need a little clarification on that, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner Harvey, I believe that you'll find that when a tax deed is purchased, that the title has to be quieted before the title's, uh, completely valid for, uh, for, uh, any type of insurance or warranty deeds or whatever. Only reason I know that is I used to buy a few tax deeds, and so that's how I found it out. Uh, Com- uh, Mr. Commando, would you like to add anything to that?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's correct, but, uh, Commissioner Harvey, your question is correct too, as to that, that information is recorded in our public records.
Thank you.
Can I speak to that, as I'm the attorney who did the quiet title action on this particular piece of property?
Yes, Mr. Sharber.
Okay, so, uh, yes, it's true, as, uh, you said, Commissioner Turner, and by the way, good morning, Commissioner, sorry.
Morning.
You're correct, that in order for a title company to issue insurance, they want to see a quiet title action happen after a tax deed is purchased. But quieting the title, uh, basically showing who the ownership is, and does not necessarily address any kind of a, a lien that survived the tax deed sale, which in this case, a government lien recorded survives the tax deed sale, and it doesn't, it doesn't actually cloud the title of ownership, the chain of ownership, it just continues to be an actual lien against the property, so the quiet title action would not in and of itself have affected this recorded lien that was still there. Uh, so hopefully that provides some insight to Commissioner Harvey, uh, and I also have further, uh, discussion I'd like to make on this particular property, as I do recognize Mr. Petri. If you'd like me to go ahead and say that now, or I can step back and see if the commissioners have other, uh, comments they'd like to, to raise.
Mr. Sharber, that would be up to you, I'll allow either of you choose. I think it would be better to just see where the discussion goes first, and see if you feel like you need to make those comments, and if you do, I'll certainly allow them at whichever time you decide to, sir. One, one thing I would like to say, Commissioner Harvey, is this isn't anything different than we've done in the past on multiple code, uh, violation cases, especially when they were acquired through the tax deed process, uh, and they had previous liens on them from, uh, things that, that the, uh, current owner did not, uh, have anything to do with, so I don't think this lien followed Mr. Petri, it followed the land, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. And so, we have, uh, we have done this multiple, multiple times in the past, I think, so, Mr. Harvey, did you have another comment, sir?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
If you would give us just a minute, I think Commissioner Goddard had his hand up, Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I was gonna make the motion, because looking at, uh, a- a- as what we've done in the past, some of these costs are just absolute cost to the county, and I do not want to ignore those. In the past, we have deleted the administrative monthly cost, which in this case is one thousand three hundred and eighty. So I was actually gonna make a motion that we accept three thousand one hundred and seventeen, uh, payable within ninety days. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, by Commissioner Goddard, and a second by, uh, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, just a second, let me get my, get to the discussion, Mr. Sharber. Um, and, uh, two, and what was that number again, Commissioner, uh, Goddard?
Three thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars.
Okay, and under discussion, while we usually don't allow it, because we're in a virtual situation, I'm gonna, and going to allow Mr. Sharber to, uh, to address us during discussion, just because of the unique situation, and he offered to discuss it earlier, and, uh, and I let, I told him I'd let him later, so, Mr. Sharber, would you try to keep it short, sir?
I will, sir, thank you very much, Commissioner. I just want to give the commission a little bit of a, a backstory on this particular parcel. The, um, there was a tax certificate that was purchased, first of all, the original owner, she died in oh-seven. The, and, and it was not her homestead property, apparently there was a, a decrepit single-wide trailer on this property. Uh, code enforcement got involved in oh-nine, two years after her death. She didn't have any heirs living in the area. Uh, it still was in the name of her, you know, her estate. In two thousand and nine, a nonprofit corporation called the Anna Furtick Foundation purchased the tax certificate. Thereafter, Putnam County had to, basically ended up buying or having the tax certificate struck off to it in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you, you understand how that, that works in this county. So, the, the nonprofit had the certificate about to expire. The county had six other certificates when the nonprofit brought this thing, an application for a tax deed sale. That, during the course of all that, in two thousand and fourteen, is when the county stepped in and did the abatement and removed the, the structure that had been on that property. Uh, my clients basically came in and were at the tax deed sale, they didn't catch the fact that there was fifty thousand dollars on a code enforcement lien hanging out there on this property, and they ended up in two thousand and eighteen, uh, purchasing this through the, through the tax deed sale. I would just like to, to point out a couple of items to the, to the commission, uh, because this kind of is a recurring thing that happens, especially, like, Commissioner Harvey said, with regard to certain areas of the county where, uh, you know, you end up having a lot of distressed properties, and, uh, people start dumping things on properties there where there's no owner there to, to care for the property. When this thing goes to the sale, if the per, the applicant doesn't actually end up applying for the tax deed, then that property would end up going over to the lands that are available for taxes. Uh, and after three years, it would basically eschew to the county, and then that would wipe out all these liens. And you know, the county ends up putting this back out for like a two hundred dollar minimum bid, is what I see is kind of like the, the standard. So here, you just had people who are unaware of the existence of a, at the time, fifty thousand dollar code lien on a property not worth fifteen thousand dollars. I would say only the unwary would actually make a bid on this property, anybody who was aware would never touch this thing, and it would end up, again, going through to the county, eschewing to the county after three years, and then that's the way it would basically, it totally wiped off. So we are, we would ask, of course, for, uh, a complete waiver of the outstanding, uh, enforcement uh, cost, but at a minimum, we, we would ask that just the abatement cost of the sixteen fifty that the county actually had to invest in having, uh, someone come out there and remove back in two thousand and fourteen. That's what we would ask to, to have Mr. Petri reimburse the county for, the county was made whole on all six of those certificates through the tax deed process. And I would just say that, you know, in the neighborhood there, the, the, the whole area i- is fairly blighted. Uh, we have photos and such, I won't, I won't go into all that with the commission, but here we have a situation where you have a purchaser at the tax deed as a, trying, you know, as founder buyers, trying to get a nice manufactured home put in, and somebody actually living there as their homestead property and, and spreading this back on the tax roll. So, for those reasons, we would ask the commission to, to please consider uh, either completely waiving the cost, or just charging for the, the cost to actually remove this structure. By the time my client ended up purchasing the property, he thought it was undeveloped, he, there was no sign of, uh, any previous, uh, structure there, so. Uh, with that, I'll, uh, go back and, and turn this back over to the commissioners, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Sharber. Um, I think we need to keep in mind on, when, on, on this request, that we've, since we've started doing this for the last year, year and a half, we've gone out of our way to remain consistent, and not set additional precedent to the, have we's gone along, so, um, at, you know, I'll open after that comment, I'll open it up to the floor to see if there's any further discussion by a commissioner.
I have a comment.
Commissioner Rawls?
So, to Mr. Sharber's point, I looked at the property on the property appraisal website, and the value is almost seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, it still looks like a, a good investment for anybody that, that comes in and spends ten or eleven thousand dollars buying a piece of property and paying the, the fines, um, and, and still has, uh, a lot of equity in the property, so, I, I personally don't want to see us deviate from what we've done for everybody else. Um, you know, this is a buyer beware situation, and, um, you know, it's, it's just one of those unfortunate situations, when somebody came in, but I, I don't think they're on the losing end of it, I, I think at the end of the day, they're on the winning end of it, so I, I think we should, uh, move forward with the, uh, with the motion and, and, um, reduce the fine, uh, for administrative costs only.
Hey, Commissioner, uh, Rawls, thank you for those comments, is there any further, uh, comments before we move into the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously to, uh, drop the, uh, the, the cost owed to the county to 3,117 dollars to be paid within 90 days. Okay, the, uh, item B is a code enforcement presentation. What do you have there for that, Mr. Moore? I'm unaware of that one.
Chairman Turner, John Theopis, um, this is more of an update, not a presentation for you. We wanted to let the commission know where we stand from January to this point with our fine reduction.
Okay.
The ones we brought in front of you. Uh, we brought a total of 14 cases for fine reduction in front of the board. Uh, we have, as of right now, we have all paid except for five that were seen on 7/28/2020, which are still within their grace period of the 90 days. Uh, we've collected a total of 11,282 dollars. So the fine reduction, um, process is moving along smoothly. We are gaining compliance, uh, and we're, we're collecting the fees and we're able to use that money towards other abatements and items.
I gotta run.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you have something for me you want me to look at?
Who is speaking?
I'm Mr. Scarborough.
I think Mr. Scarborough has left the meeting, so it's not him. So, uh, okay, all right. So, uh, next on the, uh, list is, uh, Mr. Smith, clerk of court, had to leave at, uh, 10 o'clock. So are you still here, Mr. Smith, or did you, have you already left for your other meeting?
Mine?
No, sir, I'm still here and, uh, appreciate it. Uh, we have no items today, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, the, uh, we'll move from that into appointments. Uh, Commissioner Pickens, do you have any appointments today?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
And I have none. So, uh, with that being said, I'm going to move into the administrator comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things this morning. I wanted to let you know that your care is fucking being, uh, uh, very diligent. It was very diligent in getting everything, uh, uh, out, uh, yesterday. Uh, tried to get it by 10 o'clock as requested. I think we're just a little bit late. But also want to let you know that the, uh, we've already seen 61, um, I believe hits on the site, it's on your website, it's also on, we sent it out on social media, some press release out also to the newspapers. And in the chamber, we've also sent a, uh, an email out yesterday letting everybody know that the site was up and running. Uh, we did have a, a little issue yesterday, but the, uh, consulting team took care of that rather quickly. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, good things to come from that. I believe we're also going to be having some paper, uh, applications as well here. So folks will be able to contact us here and get some information as well. Uh, and secondly, I think it's just as important, if not more important, I want to thank, uh, all of our local law enforcement for their, uh, their assistance on Saturday. As you know, we had a peaceful protest here, uh, started here at the county complex and also downtown at the, uh, at the courthouse. I believe all the due diligence that went into that, uh, that event, uh, was absolutely, uh, necessary, paid great dividends and we had a very peaceful, uh, protest here on Saturday. But again, uh, local law enforcement from Putnam County Sheriff's Office, uh, to the Palaca TV and all of our, our local jurisdictions, uh, surrounding communities that came over to assist us. I just want to say as county administrator, and I'm sure you guys will as well, as permission, say thank you to all those folks for, uh, for everything that they've done Saturday to once again show the, uh, show why Putnam County is, is, is unique and, uh, and very blessed to be where we are. So thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. If you could remute, please, when we get feedback. Next on the, uh, the list is County Attorney, uh, Mr. Commando. Colonel Commando, do you have anything for us this morning?
I have no report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Commando. Um, before we go to commissioner requests and comments, I guess we had a lady in the waiting room that, that actually went in, that, uh, called in after the public comment was over. And, uh, she left the waiting room and now she's come back to the waiting room and I think she's, uh, wearing Jacob out. Do you think it would be inappropriate for me to let her speak on her public comment, Mr. Commando?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna try to let, let her in just out of an abundance of caution. Ms. Lang, Ms. Langa, Maddie? Are you with us?
Hello?
Hello? Yes, you had some public comment today, ma'am. I'm sorry I missed you earlier. Please, please go ahead and try to hold your comment to three minutes.
Okay, thank you and, uh, happy Tuesday to everybody. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank the commissioners for an outstanding job that you're doing in this county. I'm very happy with what you're doing, like to thank you. Um, my issue here today is having any type of structure in place that limits or, um, holds back any type of public comment in a public forum, i.e. YouTube, Facebook, or any other forum. I believe that that would be a violation of my First Amendment to bring open redress in public and I would plan on having, uh, an issue in court with that.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna let our attorney, uh, uh, comment on that for you.
From my reading of the Florida sunshine laws and public, public record laws, um, we are providing an avenue for members of the public to come in and provide their redress. Interestingly enough, uh, the last individual who's making comment did have a way to make comment. So, uh, we're not taking any staff, staff efforts to limit that or minimize that and, uh, I guess this is.
I would categorically disagree with the, um, limiting because of the YouTube channel, sir. If you do not open the, uh, comments on the YouTube channel, I would expect that McDonough V. Rundle out of the Second District, Florida, uh, would take into that and I would definitely check over that, sir.
Okay, I'll ask him to look into that. Thank you for bringing it to our attention this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rawls?
I have a question for, for the general phone. Um, are, are, are they saying that they're not able to participate through YouTube? Because I thought we were allowing comments through YouTube.
It is currently not open, sir, and that's the only reason why. And with the structure in place, uh, that's what caused me to call today. Otherwise, I think you guys are doing an excellent job.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll have the, uh, we'll have our attorney review the process for us. Uh, thank you.
I think you'd be of consideration.
Yes, sir, thank you for calling in today. Uh, with that being said, um, we're going to move on to commissioner requests. Uh, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Goddard today.
Well, most importantly, I, I still enjoy going out and seeing everything in Putnam County, although in the, every afternoon, you're gonna have a storm. But I'm looking forward to seeing everybody tomorrow, uh, at this opening and I hope we're not wearing bathing suits.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Um, definitely I won't be. Uh, Commissioner Harvey, with all that new weight you've lost, you might, uh, you might wear your bathing suit.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for calling on me, but it's not enough weight yet for me to put on a bathing suit in public. So we're working that way.
You gotta wear a Speedo.
No, uh, thank you, Mr. Rawls, but that will not be a part of the attire tomorrow.
I said you don't have to wear a Speedo. You wear your baggy.
The more I have on, the better it looks, okay? So let's just leave it like that. Mr. Chairman, I do want you to, to mind, um, um, this is Alicia Morales's last week. Her last day is Friday. As our receptionist there at the front desk, um, if you, you were first came to HR, very ten she's been a great asset to our, our P, our organization. She's moving on to become a teacher and staying locally to do that. And, uh, she's been studying and working very hard to, to do that. And I just really want to wish her good, good luck and be telling her that we're gonna be praying for her and that she was a great asset here in the county, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner, and, uh, I'll echo that too. We're gonna miss Alicia. She's done a, a great job and just a pleasure to, uh, work with. Um, I'll put a shout out to all the graduating seniors. They were finally able to hold graduation this week for President City High School, Locken High School, Palaca and UI Robert. I think I've got them all. And, uh, I think they were all be, were able to hold them outside with didn't get rained on, so just want to congratulate them and, and they had to wait so long to be able to do this and, um, it's just a great thing of having to do a modified service, graduation for them. Uh, my wife attended, uh, I believe for three of them. She said it was really, really special and, 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 uh, Dr. Cerencey and his staff were able to quickly, um, modify the graduations and make them safe for all of them. That's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Uh, for the ones of you that are speaking on iPads, if you still have a case on them, uh, you may, you need to either look, uh, directly at the iPad and speak directly at the speaker when you turn your head, you muffle. So, um, so with that, Commissioner Rawls, do you have any requests today, sir?
I do. Um, I'd like to request that we get back to regular meetings. Um, I, I think we're far enough along. Uh, we should be meeting in, in person, allowing the public to come in even on a limited basis. Um, I'd also like to request that we open up that YouTube portion that allows people to comment. Um, I, I honestly thought we were doing it before. I don't know if we weren't, then, then I stand corrected, but if we were, why it was, why it was stopped. Um, because, uh, I know that, uh, the CRA meetings that I attend with the city, um, they have input like that and it gets utilized, um, every now and then. But I think it's important for us to allow the public as much access to us as possible. And, um, uh, I, I wanted to say earlier, I, I was muted when we were under discussion of the Port Authority. I did meet with the, uh, um, with, with, uh, Veritas and they're gonna be giving me some numbers, uh, but they're gonna be coming to us, um, here shortly with a request for us to, um, uh, repair our portion of the, the rail spur and it, it looks like it's gonna be less than $100,000, um, for something that will last in excess of eight to 10 years versus what we're spending right now on a yearly basis anyways, making intermediate repairs and, um, you know, ha- having to, uh, upset the apple cart every couple of months when CSX comes down. I guess they come down monthly and they give them 60 days to make the, make the repair. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up and, um, I look forward to seeing you guys tomorrow afternoon at the, uh, ribbon cutting. But what time's that gonna be exactly?
10 o'clock tomorrow morning, Commissioner Rawls.
Okay, for some reason I thought it was 2 o'clock. Well, um, I look forward to seeing you guys face to face tomorrow at 10 o'clock and I will not be wearing a Speedo either.
Uh, Commissioner Harvey, you had additional comment, sir?
No, sir, I just have a question. Uh, Commissioner Rawls, on the Veritas, on the rail spur, that, that rail spur is owned by the Port Authority, am I correct in saying that?
Part of it is ours, part of it is theirs. They've been maintaining theirs. Um, and what's created the problem is that the new locomotives have six axles and it pushes the rails apart and, and the, the spur is very, very, very old. I actually met with a representative from, um, uh, the SAP Railroad Repair Company. I was, um, meeting with a group of investors that were looking at purchasing the, um, the big warehouse out there and they wanted to add a rail spur. So I'm hoping that if this is gonna happen and there's any chance that, that, um, the two can be put together, maybe we can get them to help us, or we can help them, um, by participating with them if they're doing theirs at the same time. But, um, either way, it doesn't look like i- i- it's gonna be that, that, that costly. Veritas said, um, you know, we're in the business of, of manufacturing steel. We can buy the rail, we can buy the timbers and, um, their contractor said it wouldn't be a problem if y'all, if y'all want to do that, um, we'll allow you to purchase some materials and, and have the cost savings there. And he said it drives the price down significantly.
Well, I guess my point, my point is, is it a Port Authority item? Cause you know, I, I look at that as an economic driver for Putnam County.
It is absolutely a Port Authority item, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, Commissioner Rawls, I know that the board voted to allow you to, uh, kind of get into the Port Authority and take it under your arm and see if you see what recommendations solution and solutions that you could come up with to make it a better place. But keep in mind that, that when the commission allows either one of us to do a certain, a certain option, that's only to find recommendations and solutions to be brought back to the board for, uh, for commitment. So I applaud you in a meeting with Veritas and I applaud you in trying to come up with a solution to that. But I'm almost certain that Veritas in the past has actually offered to pay part of that. So for them to come to us and say, oh yeah, well, you know, we'll do our part if you do your part, then they're going back on a previous agreement, a verbal agreement that they had already made to participate in that because they're the only one using the rail spur.
Well, what, what they're, they're, they're actually offering to purchase all the materials at their cost, so that, um, and from what he's saying, that would cut the cost down by about 40%.
Yes, sir, that's good. And like I said, I commend, I commend you for, uh, going forward and looking for that and I'll be looking forward to you, uh, bringing the deal to us. Uh, did you have anything else today, Commissioner Rawls?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, I would like this, take this opportunity, if I may, under my, uh, commissioners' comments to, uh, congratulate our administrator, county's, uh, commit, or Administrator Suggs. He is, uh, credited by the International Local Government Management Organization and I'm gonna read just a little small, uh, portion of the, uh, press release that came out of them. Uh, Washington DC, August 11th, 2020, uh, Terry K. Suggs, County Administrator of Putnam County. Florida recently received the accredited manager designation from ICMA, the International County City Management Association. Mr. Suggs is one of only 1,300 local government management professionals currently accredited through the ICMA voluntary accrediting program. ICMA's mission is to advance professional local government through leadership, management, innovation and ethics and by increasing the proficiency of appointed chief administrative officials, assistant administrators and other employees who serve local governments and regional entities around the world. This organization's membership spans 27 countries, also include educators, students and other local government employees. To receive the prestigious ICMA credential, a member must have significant experience as senior management executive in local government, have earned a degree preferably in public administration or related field and demonstrated a committed, a commitment to high standards of integrity and to lifelong learning and professional development. Mr. Suggs' professional local government career spans 25 years, the last nine serving as city manager in Keystone, city manager of Palaca and county administrator of Putnam County. I would like to be the first to, uh, congratulate Mr. Suggs for this, uh, this wonderful achievement in his life and his, and for the achievement that he brings to Putnam County. Round of applause, please. With that being said, um, I would like to also join the other commissioners in, uh, wishing Alicia the best in her future endeavors and, uh, is there, if there's no more business to come before the board today, this meeting is now adjourned. this meeting is now adjourned.